Good evening, and thank you for viewing the November 2nd meeting of the Arcata City Council. The City Council meeting is being held as a hybrid meeting with both in-person attendance and teleconference access via Zoom. First, we have a land acknowledgement. The city of Arcata acknowledges that the lands we are located on are the unceded ancestral lands of the Wiat tribe. The land that Arcata rests on is known in the Wiat language as "gudini," meaning "over in the woods or among the redwoods." Past actions by local, state, and federal governments removed the Wiat and other indigenous peoples from the land and threatened to destroy their cultural practices. The city of Arcata acknowledges the Wiat community, their elders, both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement seeks to aid in dismantling the legacy narratives of settler colonialism. If you would like to, please join us for the flag salute. Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Atkins Salazar.
Here.
Vice Mayor Schaefer.
Here.
Councilmember Matthews.
Here.
Councilmember Stillman.
Present.
Councilmember Watson.
Here.
All present.
If you wish to make a comment during the meeting, either at the two open public comment periods, or for an individual agenda items, there are three ways to do so. If you are here in person, please line up behind the podium when the item you would like to speak on is accepting public comment. If you are logged on to Zoom, click Raise Your Hand when it is time for public comment on the item you wish to speak on. If you are on the phone, press *9 on your phone to raise your hand. When it is your turn, you will be prompted to dial *6 on your phone. For each item, we will be taking in-person public comment first and then move to the online comments. We will not be going back and forth, so when it's time to comment, if you're doing so in person, please make sure that you line up. And if you are on Zoom or the phone, please raise your electronic hand as soon as that time comes, because we don't want to miss you. So that takes us to ceremonial matters, and we have three today. First, we have a proclamation recognizing November 15th, 2022, as Zero Waste Day, and we have council member Matthews to read that. Also, she will -- each council member will read the proclamation, and I think we've got recipients in person for all three of them. So after we read the proclamation, the council member will go and present it to you, and then you're welcome to go to the podium and say something if you would like to. Thank you.
All right. "City of Arcata proclamation recognizing November 15th, 2022, as Zero Waste Day. Whereas the quantity and variety of single-use products and packaging continues to increase in Arcata's waste stream, and whereas the city of Arcata does not have adequate manufacturing infrastructure to support recycling, and the majority of the materials recovered for recycling and composting must be transported long distances to re-enter a manufacturing process. And whereas waste prevention strategies are the most effective economically and environmentally for reducing waste, and whereas zero-waste philosophy is comprehensive, first emphasizing upstream waste prevention strategies, and including materials reuse, recycling-based manufacturing, recycling, composting, and food waste digestion. And whereas the city of Arcata residents value the natural beauty of the Redwood coast and are committed to resource and energy conservation, reducing the waste they generate, and seeking practical solutions. And whereas the city of Arcata has joined Zero Waste Humboldt's Refill Not Landfill Network, and has recorded that the city's water bottle refill station awarded from Zero Waste Humboldt has already been used to refill an estimated 3,468 bottles to reduce single-use plastic bottles in our waste stream. Now therefore, Bria proclaimed that the City Council of the city of Arcata hereby recognizes November 15th, 2022, as Zero Waste Day, and calls upon all Arcata residents to adopt or renew their commitment to choose to reuse refillable cups, water bottles, food takeout containers, and shopping bags. The council commits to learning innovative waste prevention approaches, and asks Arcadans to make special effort to reduce waste and purchase products made with recycled content all year round. Dated November 2nd, 2022, signed Stacy Atkins Salazar, Mayor, and Ben Winker."
That's you.
Okay, thank you so much for this great proclamation. I've been a part of the Zero Waste Board for a few years, and we're excited with the work we've been able to do with the city of Arcata. So many people we know have been a part of the different recycling systems and streams, and I think we're going to come to a new revolution and a new renaissance for that. And I hope you continue to support Zero Waste Humboldt and all of us in that waste stream reduction. I do appreciate the green waste composting bins you seem to still find in the COB webs and hand out, and I do appreciate all the good work and innovation that's come out of Arcata to reduce waste from the source. And I hope we can find new manufacturing streams to push those materials into rather than trucking them out of the area. So thank you so much for everything, and yeah, have a great night. Thank you.
Okay, next, we have a proclamation and recognition of the Great American Smokeout, which is November 17th, 2022, and council member Stillman will be reading that proclamation.
Well, in recognition of the Great American Smokeout, November 17th, 2022. Whereas the American Cancer Society encourages all tobacco users to join the Great American Smokeout and quit smoking for at least one day. And whereas each year nearly 34,000 California adults die from smoking, and over 20,000 kids become new daily smokers. And whereas flavored tobacco products make smoking and vaping electronic cigarettes attractive to youth and harder to quit. And whereas more than 84% of high school smokers use electronic cigarettes, almost all which are flavored. And whereas the electronic cigarettes create hazardous waste in the form of plastics, semiconductors, heavy metals, lithium batteries for which there is no established disposal or recovery procedure. Whereas on Saturday, September 5th, there will be an educational activity table at the community at the Arcata Plaza from 10:00 to 1:00, where folks can learn about ways to address the increase in youth smoking and reduce how to quit for good. Now therefore, Bria proclaimed that the City Council of the city of Arcata bear -- I should probably have some water. hereby recognizes and supports the American Cancer Society's Great American Smokeout on Thursday, November 17th, 2022, and encourage all residents who use tobacco products to consider that they do not have to stop smoking, but stop smoking for one day, just to start with one day only. And so this is signed by Mayor Stacy Atkins Salazar, and Jay McCubrey is going to receive it.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. My name is Jay McCubrey. I work with a program called Tobacco-Free North Coast. Thank you, Stacy. And we have been doing tobacco litter cleanups in Arcata for many years. E-cigarettes pose a whole new potential environmental legacy with the hazardous materials in them and the waste they create. There's a number of speakers here tonight, so I'm just going to pass it along, and thank you very much. It's nice to be here in person.
Good evening. I'm Joshua Sweet, and I'm a youth substance abuse advocate, and I'm a member of the TIDE Coalition, a youth coalition that aims to educate our community about tobacco control issues. We've known for a while now that tobacco products are addictive and harmful to our health, yet we still sell them pretty much everywhere. Sure, we've restricted tobacco companies in the past, but they've only come back stronger and are now targeting our youth with flavored e-cigarette devices. It worked. These -- they've managed to market these e-cigarette devices in a way that youth find them appealing and got them hooked on them. And the middle schools and the high schools are reporting a significant increase in student vaping, and it's only going to get worse unless we come together and find a way to stop it. But the tobacco companies aren't the only issue. Nicotine is an incredibly addictive substance, and it seems almost impossible to quit. But it's not impossible. With dedication, support from friends and family, and with the right resources like those on kickatca.org, those with nicotine addiction, those with the nicotine addiction can finally kick the habit. So this Great American Smokeout, this Great American Smokeout, be the support that someone needs, someone you know needs in their life, whether that's a friend, a parent, a sibling, a coworker, you name it. Or maybe you yourself are looking to quit smoking or vaping, and you need support in your life. Now's the time to find the help to get you through. By overcoming a nicotine addiction, we not only make our overall community healthier, but we also take a stand against big tobacco, one butt at a time.
I have some kickatca.org take-charge cards, so if anybody would like to take one of those, and if it's okay to leave one at the -- a stack at the window tonight for the community, that would be great. Thanks.
Thank you all. Our last proclamation is in recognition of California Retired Teachers Week, and that's November 6th through the 12th of this year, and that will be read by Vice Mayor Schaefer.
I'm happy to read this proclamation, hopefully as somebody who will be a retired teacher someday. Not soon, but someday. In recognition of California Retired Teachers Week, November 6th through 12th, 2022. Whereas the California Retired Teachers Association was formed by Laura E. Settle in 1929, at the start of the Great Depression, with the goal of relieving the economic hardships suffered by retired teachers, and for 93 years has been a leading advocate for providing teachers with sufficient retirement income. And whereas the California Retired Teachers Association also provides continuing support to active and future teachers, providing grants, scholarships, and donations totaling more than $750,000 a year. And whereas a vast majority of California's retired teachers share a commitment to improving their communities through volunteer activities totaling more than 4,000 hours of service. And whereas the annual dollar value of this volunteer time donated by retired teachers throughout the state has reached nearly 69 million during the most recent reporting period. And whereas last year, local retired teachers donated $4,500 in scholarships to Cal Poly Humboldt, and $250 each to our local museums and to the Sequoia Park Education Fund. Additionally, they volunteered their time in local schools, museums, hospitals, the Little Red Schoolhouse, and the Food Bank and other community organizations. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the City Council of the city of Arcata hereby recognizes November 6th through 12th, 2022, as California Retired Teachers Week in Arcata, and encourages residents to honor all teachers and acknowledge the vital role that retired teachers fulfill in every community in California. Dated November 2nd, and signed by Mayor Stacy Atkins Salazar. And we have Sharon Tecker here to receive it.
Well, that was good. Yes, I am -- thank you, Arcata City Council. I'm Sharon Tecker, and I've lived in Arcata for 56 years. I am a retired teacher, and I'm past president of the local CalRTA. It stands for California Retired Teachers Association, and it includes Humboldt and Del Norte Counties, and we have over 500 members. You know, retired teachers from all of our state, as in the proclamation, said we volunteered so many hours to our communities. Locally, these activities not only include tutoring and working in the schools and classrooms, but helping to organize, just recently, the Children's Author Festival. This is last month, where 24 authors came to Humboldt County and visited over 50 schools. And we just -- we had all these drivers, and Russ and I helped drive one of the authors to Fieldbrook School. It was mentioned that we maintain the Little Red Schoolhouse, the fairgrounds, the food banks, St. Vincent's DePaul Free Dining Facility. We have volunteers, League of Women Voters, Alzheimer's Walk fundraiser, Cancer Society, Betty Chin Day's Center, the Humboldt County Library. We have retired teachers that volunteer there. The Arcata Marsh Center, they have volunteer teachers. Redwood Music Festival, Humboldt sponsors, just to name a few. Any social service that helps kids and families, you will find a retired teacher volunteering to help. And as it said, just our local CalRTA has given 4,500 grants and scholarships to local new and future teachers. Do you remember a favorite teacher from elementary, middle, and high school who made a difference in your life? Think about that. Not only did we teach new skills, we tried to set an example for strong work ethic, honesty, empathy, and cooperation. If you read about this meeting tonight, you, maybe you can think of a teacher who taught you to read. You know, we cared about our students and community while we were teachers, and you can see that that caring doesn't stop in retirement. So I thank you, Arcata City Council, and for the recognition tonight for Retired Teachers Week. Thank you.
I just want to say thank you so much for being a teacher. The most exciting time in my grade school was when my fourth-grade teacher became a combination teacher for fifth grade. She became fifth, fourth grade, so I got her two years in a row. Mrs. Allen, and I read 100 books, so she would take me out to lunch in Davis, California. And I wrote reports on them, and they're, you know, but I just want to say thank you so much for your service and all the volunteer hours that all of you have given. Your inspiration to all of us, and I imagine every single one of us that try to lead or try to, you know, live a good life, have a good teacher behind them. So thank you so much. Yes.
So that takes us to early oral communications, and the City Council values your comments. This 15-minute time period allows people to address the council on matters that are not on the agenda. So again, this is a time for things that aren't on the agenda. If you're wishing to speak on an agenda item, we will have opportunities on each agenda item for that. Please know that pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on items that are not listed on the posted agenda. At the end of all oral communications, the council may respond to statements. Supported requests that require council action will be set for a future agenda or referred to staff. Speakers are limited to two minutes. And so as always, we will do our in-person comments first. We'll take the first four folks. So we do it by number because we have a limited time. So we'll take numbers one through four first, and then we'll go and see who's online and take the first four online. And depending how much time you all use of your comment time, if we've got more, we'll take more, but we've got 15 minutes, so let's go ahead and get started with speaker number one.
Good evening. Gregory Daggett. I wanted to bring up Cal Poly. They put out an ERI on the Craftsman wall, so I'm not sure if you're aware that the building heights are seven and six stories. If you take a close look at that, they basically don't address how the fire protection is going to be done. They don't even mention the city of Arcata, that we are not capable of doing anything over four stories. So they basically have just passed the responsibility onto the city of Arcata. So I wanted to make sure you're aware of that, and that has been an issue that has been addressed in here and on the newspapers, the fact that this is a cost that could be like $2 million a year with staffing for a ladder truck, and has big consequences. And I don't think they're being a very good neighbor by just passing this cost onto us without doing anything about it, and maybe, maybe the city knows more about it, but that's what I've read. They've also, as far as 911, you know, it's our responsibility here to take care of that, policing, so a lot of extra costs. And I would also address the, as far as Coastal Commission, I brought that up at least two different meetings. It wasn't because of the decision that was made, it was because what was in it. Our city manager actually wanted exemptions from Coastal Act regarding the levies, so we certainly have like a policy that we're trying to address by levy enhancement in the future, which could be a strategy that, you know, a city wants to do with protecting housing and infrastructure, but it also has a very negative effect from the standpoint of environmental effects and also on our native population of what that area was, wetland areas. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for having us here. My name is Sorrell Oberlander. I am the Chair of the Arcata Chamber of Commerce and the Vice Chair over here is Ken Hammack. And it is our great pleasure to introduce to you all Anissa Escobedo, our new Executive Director for the Chamber of Commerce.
It's a great privilege to serve the Chamber of Commerce here in Arcata. I actually recently moved to Arcata about five months ago, and I had been a very successful business owner. I was not looking for a job when I moved back to Humboldt. And I had seen the job posting and I'm like, this is great. The Chamber and Visitor Center really embraces diversity and really wants the Chamber to look like our community. And just to make everyone known, I am a trans Latina that identifies as a trans female. So I've been involved in the Chamber world for about seven years, 15 years in private business, and I'm excited for this new chapter for the Chamber. We, the board and staff, want to reengage with our community and offer additional services and new member benefits for our Chamber members as well and enhance our welcome center. So if you're ever around the center, give me a call. I'd be more happy to give you a tour and give you some great information about the upcoming programs next year. We also look forward to working with the new Executive Director for the Arcata Main Street Organization, and we have some great ideas for next year. So thank you for having me.
Thank you, Anissa, and welcome.
Good evening. I'm Fred Wise. Tonight I am speaking on the Westwood Garden Apartment Project. This project is 102 units. Each unit is 416 square feet, one bedroom apartment. It was approved by the Planning Commission last week. It is my view that this is the most poorly designed apartment building in all of Arcata ever. I'm of the opinion that this project should not have been approved in its current form. A theme of my arcata1.com website is "Arcata, We Can Do Better." I think we can do a lot better than this project. I completely recognize the need for housing. This project disregards, in my opinion, basic quality of life needs of its tenants and should not be accepted. There are major issues in the approval process. I will speak later with some details on this. As one example, the Two Designated American with Disabilities Act Apartments and ADA Parking Facilities, in my view, do not meet ADA standards, but they were approved. More importantly, there were statements in the staff report that were, again, in my opinion, misleading and 100% false. The project was referred to, and I quote, "unrestricted affordable housing for the community." It is not affordable housing. The notion of affordable housing was repeated by three of the five commissioners. It appears that this false statement did indeed influence their decision. I'll remind the council that to make false statements in a staff report is illegal. It's against the law. I think this housing can be created on this site in a form that benefits the people of Arcata. It is my sincere hope that the City Council will take this up as an opportunity to serve the people of Arcata with quality housing and not this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, City Council, staff, people in the room, people in the Zoom, people on the phone, people who don't even know this is happening and aren't here, but hopefully may watch the video later on because it is available to watch. My name is Joanne McGary, and I have been attending in person these City Council meetings for quite some time, primarily because I really care about our community. And I moved here 10 years ago from Santa Barbara, and that's already was an amazing community, and I thought I was coming to even a more amazing one. And I have to say, I'm pretty disappointed. I thought Arcata could be better than it's seeming to be, especially in regards to being in the vanguard of the climate reality and making really, really important systematic changes in how we live and our lifestyle in our community. We live in a redwood forest, and everything you need to know about surviving on the planet, you can learn in a redwood forest. And we're not learning those lessons very well in terms of the climate reality. And I just, today I read another, you know, very sad article about the climate reality, and it started with the phrase, "There are zero days left to procrastinate." There are zero days left to procrastinate. You know, we're the frog in the boiling water, and we really need to take a lot of climate action. I love how this community comes together for all these wonderful fun events, but those fun events aren't going to happen in the future if we don't do some serious work on making our community climate resilient and mitigating and adapting to what the future is going to be for us in terms of not only temperature, sea level rise, but those who are fleeing from places like Santa Barbara that are way too hot now. So I'll be speaking to you later, but thanks for listening today.
Thank you. Are you folks wanting to talk? Okay, so we're going to go to the online folks, and then we'll probably have time. Okay, our first online is Arcata Love Pride. Go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Awesome. I am an Arcata resident and proud of this community. I feel strongly that if we don't start working together, like the last person said, to protect our community and our way of life, we will wake up one day in the future and look back and wish we'd done something sooner. With the election on Tuesday, I felt compelled to make this public comment in support actually of Brett Watson for Arcata City Council. You see, I set aside a couple of hours a day for a few weeks to deep dive into this man, the allegations against him, and his history of like community service. Brett Watson seems like the clear choice for Arcata. He believes strongly in taking bold and innovative like cool steps to create more housing for the many people who dream of living Arcata, but, you know, he told me to my face that he's always going to support responsible planning, and the overdevelopment of our city is something that he's not for. That's big and it's huge for me. I had the opportunity to sit down with him recently. He promised that in the next four years, he would continue finding solutions for our homeless crisis and expand economic development opportunities, support the creation of a world-class dog park, which I think is really cool because I own a couple of them, expand city beautification and improvement to street safety, work with Cal Poly Humboldt, and, you know, so that it's a responsible growth that won't negatively impact Arcata neighborhoods. Look, you know, bottom line, not only does he like actually listen to his constituents because he like sat with me, he represents their views and beliefs with his voice and his votes. That's badass. Sorry. Brett is the only council member who exercises like any level of fiscal responsibility that I could find in my deep dive, and Brett is the only council member who's listening to Arcata residents and wants to keep the gateway plan at four stories. That's rad. You know, I don't understand why they would spend $15,000 of taxpayer money on this poorly done investigation into Brett, you know, but it seems that they never gave Brett the opportunity.
All right, that's your two minutes. Thank you for that. Next speaker is, trying to get to him here, William. Go ahead, William.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Yes, another concerned Arcata citizen calling in here. And like the caller before me, it is, you know, the election is creeping up, and I was recently looking at a few things and just kind of wondering, you know, a few details on the Brett Watson investigation. Like, is it true that the person that made the claim, or that there was no real claim filed in his situation? And then is just the fellow council members or city that went about like kind of hiring the private investigator to start it up? It just kind of seems like he's being railroaded. Anyways, also just wanted to throw my support just because being, you know, physically conservative and just, you know, kind of being a little more careful about what the city is spending money on. It's something we really need right now with the election that's far off. Anyway, that's about all I got, but thank you.
All right, thank you. Next speaker is Geraldo. Go ahead, Geraldo, sorry.
Thank you so much. Hello, dear Arcata City Council members. My name is Gerardo Hernandez. I'm a student at Cal Poly Humboldt and a community member here in Arcata. It's six days before the election, and I want to wish the majority of the candidates running for City Council the best of luck in their respective race. With the remainder of my time, I'm addressing my complaint towards Councilmember Brett Watson. Mr. Watson, you are the embodiment of the rot that has plagued the city for quite some time. From an arrest for DUI and cocaine possession to an investigation that included that you, Mr. Watson, had sexually harassed a city staff member and subjected staff to inappropriate behavior. While you contest this with your own so-called investigation, a Humboldt County Superior Court Judge granted the City of Arcata a temporary restraining order against you due to probable cause of your escalating behavior that the City of Arcata is alleging, such as attempting to gain unauthorized access to logged portions of City Hall. You even violated that recent temporary restraining order recently as it explicitly prohibits you to contact four city officials, and you did just that, no matter if it was direct or indirect to help a constituent. Numerous of your constituents have called on you to resign, but you have muted your ears to spread your narcissism. This is a quote that demonstrates of who you are, and I quote, "A person who has no sense of ethics, remorse, conscience, or moral value, no sense of moral responsibility towards other people, is called a sociopath." You should have resigned when you had the chance, no matter if you win or lose, the city and Arcadian residents will hold you accountable. And that's it for it. That's what I have to say. Have a good day to everyone else.
Okay, thank you. I think that was the third person. Okay, so we have.
Thanks, Gerardo.
We have a fourth. We actually have two more, but we have room for one more. Raylina, go ahead.
Hi, I'd like to give my comment to my partner sitting next to me, Adam. Yeah.
Oh, hi. Hold on, I gotta turn off my device. So anyway, I wanted to just touch base real quick about Brett Watson's fiscal responsibility. He recently is paying for sponsored posts on Instagram to just send out pictures of places like Iceland, lacking any context or commentary whatsoever. To me, that seems maybe not particularly physically responsible. Anyway, I wanted to get to the topic of Westwood Garden Apartments. The Planning Commission recently approved this plan, and my understanding, as I gathered from the meeting, was that if they had ceded control to the state, we would essentially have had a better project. The reason I say that is that my understanding is that the same project would have had to require 20% affordable by definition of the state of California housing. The project that was approved does not have that. Or the project would have had to abide by the rules without any exemptions. And in order to do that, he would have had to use larger buildings, which would have maintained our green space and not forced residents to live in essentially tunnels. So my question is, how can the Planning Commission disregard their ability to, you know, exact oversight on a project and then approve it when the state could have essentially approved a better project? Additionally, he could have followed the rules and been granted additional housing. We could have had more housing for more people on this site. This site is a place for humane housing, not the project that was approved. So I think that's worthy of discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. So did you say, are there more hands up?
There are two more hands up online.
Okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna have to come back to this later. That's three more folks. It's gonna put us quite a ways over, so.
And I just want to say, you know, Iceland's a beautiful country. So, yeah, I stand behind sharing a post of Iceland. Thanks.
Okay, so we will have time at the end of the meeting for all, for items that are not on the agenda. Okay, so that takes us to the consent calendar. And all matters on the consent calendar are considered to be routine by the City Council and are enacted in one motion. There is no separate discussion of any of these items. If discussion is required, that item is removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. At the end of the reading of the consent calendar, council members or members of the public can request that an item be removed for separate discussion. So we have Item A, approve the minutes of the City Council meeting of October 5th, 2022. B, approve the minutes of the City Council meeting of October 19th, 2022. C, biweekly report on dispersments. D, declare a continuation of the local emergency related to the coronavirus pandemic. E, adopt resolution number 223-22, accepting an easement deed for public sidewalk purposes over assessors parcel number 021-163-007, and authorize the city manager to execute the certificate of acceptance. F, award a contract in the amount of $215,340 to SHN Consulting Engineers and Geologists Incorporated for engineering and environmental consulting services for Phase 1 of the wastewater treatment facility levy expansion project, and authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents. G, sign on to the letter of support to fund Senate Bill 907 that provides dedicated EBT payment support for certified farmers markets. Would any council member like to remove an item from the consent calendar?
Yeah, I would. I'd like to remove. Item F, as in Frank, please.
Okay, Item F. Anyone else?
Well, I'd move for approval of the consent calendar for A, B, C, D, E, and G.
I will second.
Okay, and before we do that, is there any member from staff or public that would like any other item to be removed?
We were also going to remove F. So I have one here. Call-in user ending in 1199, did you want to remove an item from the consent calendar? Okay, I'm not sure if they've just raised their hand for public comment. Call-in user 1199, ending in 1199, did you want to remove an item from the consent calendar?
So, Joanne, Item F has been removed? Is that you? Okay, good. So we're good. All right, so there's the motion and a second for items A through G with the exception of F. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, so that takes us to F.
Yeah, so I just wanted to clarify, this is, it's just for kind of the study and planning of expanding the levy? Is that correct?
Yeah, this is just a grant that the city has received to do the design work for levy enhancement.
So what's the process after this? And I see that Phase 2 is for construction. At some point, does it go through the California Coastal Commission for approval?
Great, yes. Very happy to speak to that. Good evening, council members. This is Phase 1 of a grant through Cal OES with a Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, and it's been a priority in the capital improvement program for quite a number of years. This was the third grant submittal that was funded. And for this Phase 1, it's phased work. We have the grant for the planning, preliminary design, and geotechnical work. And so this will be all of the investigations and the planning and SEQA document and NEPA environmental compliance work in order to develop a project and a successful project. That then goes for review for those environmental compliance documents and preliminary designs with our funding partner. And then after that, we would begin Phase 2, which would include our permitting stage, so working on our coastal development permit. But we also note, and we have been in close communication, as we've communicated on the wastewater treatment plant Phase 1 upgrade, that we're in close communication with coastal staff. And during this Phase 1, would have preliminary discussions about the project with coastal staff to really plan our direction. And we also will be adhering to all of the conditions in our Phase 1 project. So this levy augmentation would be proceeding in parallel and in collaboration with our coastal hazards adaptation. and in collaboration with our coastal hazards adaptation and implementation planning.
Thank you. Are you aware of any other similar projects along the California coast that the Coastal Commission has approved or disapproved?
So I know that it is a, it is a challenge for many local jurisdictions, state entities, private entities for planning for Seal of Our Eyes, and there's many ways to adopt. This is one, levy augmentation is one opportunity, especially for an existing critical facility. We see a pathway of continuing to work with the Coastal Commission staff and Coastal Commission to ensure what we are proposing is consistent with the Coastal Act, or also really on balance for protecting our coastal resources and ensuring integrity and protection in the long term of our essential wastewater treatment plant facility. So those are all the considerations that city staff and our consultants will be taking into the discussions with the Coastal Commission staff.
Thanks. Go ahead.
I just want to clarify that this is a project that we've already budgeted for at budget setting, and right now, we're just approving a contract, is that correct?
Right, so in your budget-setting process, you had adopted a CIP Capital Improvement Program with this project as part of it, and we had budgeted in the budget $150,000 for this project. The council did the budgeting process before we received word that we were awarded the grant. And so now that we've been awarded the grant, we will do a budget adjustment to pull in those funds so that we have a fully funded contract. So, yes, you have, the council budgeted city sewer funds to initiate the project, and now we have secured a grant that will cover 75% of the contract costs.
So we're actually, that's great. Yeah, and the council would have approved the application for that grant as well.
Thank you.
So, are you aware of similar projects that other communities have done that the Coastal Commission has either approved or disapproved?
So, I don't have anything else to add besides my answer to your previous question. We know that there are, and that's something that staff would be happy to come back to with a, an answer at a later date.
Okay, so that, to me, that sounds like a no, which is okay. I was just looking for a yes or no answer. Okay, so, yeah, based off of my experience and, you know, knowledge of the beliefs of the Coastal Commission and, you know, past projects they've approved and denied, this sounds more substantial than something they would likely approve, in my opinion. And so I don't think it will get approved, and I don't think we should be spending money on it. So, thank you for answering my questions, and I'm ready to vote when you guys are.
All right, and staff just wanted to add, so we have received a letter of award for our funding. We have been in communication with the funding agency specific to the award of this contract, and we've verbally been told that they will approve it, but we just wanted you to add to the motion, execute all applicable documents upon confirmation from the funding source.
Thank you. So I would like to move for award of contract in the amount of, well, do you want me to read the whole thing? Or can I just make sure that as it's written will be included in the motion, which will be to execute all applicable documents, which was added? Or do you want me to read the whole thing?
Yeah, with final approval from the funding agency, that's all you need to add. Approve Item F with the augmentation of final approval from the funding agency.
Okay, final approval of the agency, okay. Bridgette, were you able to get that? Okay, thank you.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, do we have public comment on this item?
Hi, my name's Joanne McGary, and I've been somewhat following this wastewater treatment, millions of dollars being spent, Phase 1s, Phase 2s, in conjunction with learning more and more about Coastal Commission, looking at these, these types of projects, and the 101 corridor that they've looked at in terms of sea level rise. And I really am concerned that such items are put on a consent calendar when so much money is at stake. And I would sort of like to ask when the council to really consider for future items like this with monies involved of such large scales for projects that are very expensive and can be very controversial in terms of future things. I just think it should be taken off a consent calendar and not, not have us asked to have it off a consent calendar. It should be, this is a project that's been ongoing, but there's a lot of questions that a lot of people have about Phase 2 particularly. I know that the millions that are being spent right now on Phase 1 are necessary for, you know, a healthier bay and a better producing sewage treatment plant. But what this sort of looks like is slippery sloping into potential, "Well, we've got this money, so we just gotta go ahead with Phase 2," kind of thing. And I'm really, really concerned that putting it on a consent calendar with so much money, talking about levy augmentation or expansion when what I thought Phase 1 was about something different and the future of our existing sewage treatment plant really is in question. It really is in question, it's not, oh, well, we're just gonna fix it. So, I'd like the council to consider taking all future matters that have to do with the sewage treatment plant off consent calendar, and thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanna say I 100% agree with Joanne, and I really feel like this last year, the consent calendar's really been abused and not really used the way it's intended to be used. It does seem like it's, you know, kind of being used as this tool to kind of subvert, you know, public in conversation.
So, we have a motion on the floor and a second.
There is potentially one public comment, I'm not sure if it's a holdover hand. Caller ending in 8801, do you have a public comment about Item F on the consent calendar? Award of contract for design of levy augmentation? All right, since they're not, I'm muting, I'm assuming it's just held for public comment later.
Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Watson, we didn't hear your vote, sorry. I'm assuming it's no, but, okay, all right, thank you. Next, we have new business, and this is to adopt Resolution Number 223-21, declaring city-owned properties to be surplus lands pursuant to the Surplus Lands Act. Could we please have a staff report from our community development director, David Loyah?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just a moment to shuffle my papers. So, before you tonight is a resolution declaring four properties surplus lands so that we can go through the process of disposing of them. So we're asking that you receive public comment, adopt Resolution 223-21 to make that declaration. As the staff report states, the Surplus Lands Act was recently revised to try and give preference for affordable housing production on sites that were formerly owned by public entities and are no longer needed for those public purposes. And so this resolution is really the first step in a series of steps that we'll need to take to work through that Surplus Lands Act process and make these sites available for, you know, for other uses. I can get into detail with you about what that process is if you're interested, but the high-level overview is that there's, in addition to declaring surplus lands, we need to put out notice so that affordable housing producers can have the opportunity to look at the properties and decide if they want to try and enter negotiations with us for purchase and development. I do want to be clear that all of the lands that we're looking at today are zoned industrial and aren't zoned for or suitable for housing development. Even though that is the case, we're still required through this process to record a covenant on the property that if it ever sells, that it can be developed for affordable housing. And so it's, I think, an indicator where the state is leaning, yet another indicator where the state is leaning as a result of the housing crisis. There are two properties on Bell Fowler, they're industrial limited zone properties or leftover from the Alder Grove Industrial Park, the last two properties the city owns from that industrial park development. And those, you know, will be, you know, subject to the standard conditions for industrial properties that we have in the city. And then I also included in your packet the Long Range Property Management Plan, the LMRMP, that's a joke, that is, that addresses the Happy Valley and Little Lake dispositions. Those were former redevelopment properties, and so they are subject to additional requirements. And I just wanted to bring that to your attention again so that you're aware of those requirements. And I'd be happy to answer any questions about those particular requirements if you have them. But I also did want to just identify that these are important properties for the city as it transitions, some of the properties that were identified as infill opportunity zones and are housing element. There may be displacements of industrial businesses that we want to retain in our local economy and make sure that there's a place for them to continue to operate in the city of Arcata. And so really, this is a first step in trying to create that space where these property, where these businesses rather can continue to thrive in our community. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have. I'd suggest you open it to public comment and adopt Resolution 223-21.
We had a presentation about this before, I remember, a PowerPoint, is that correct? Closed session, all right, thanks.
Well, you want to take public comment first, or do you want to have a motion first? Okay.
Councilmember Watson, did you have any questions for Director Loyah on this?
Thank you, Mayor. So I was curious about the two parcels in Alder Grove. We, there's been someone who's expressed interest in those, right?
Over the years, there's been different folks that have expressed interest in them. And I think if we had, you know, if we had a... Yeah, okay, and there's, yeah, there was one that came to a closed session recently.
So, yeah, I was just curious, just based off of, you know, that, the most recent person who expressed interest, it didn't seem like that they, I mean, so it might correct in the way I read it that we have to first give priority to somebody using the properties for low-income housing? For affordable housing?
Yeah, that's right, the property has to be listed on the Housing Community Development website. There are certain entities on that, on that site as well that need to be notified and given the opportunity to evaluate whether they want to, you know, make an offer on the property for affordable housing development.
And then how does that work? Like, is it, does it have to be up there for a month, six months, a year? And then if nobody expresses interest, then we're free to sell it for a different use?
Yeah, that's correct. I believe the statutory timelines are 30 days for the initial notice and then 90 days for negotiation period if, if anyone expresses interest.
Okay, that's all my questions, thank you very much, David.
Oh, do we want to change? All right, let's go ahead and take public comment. We'll start with everybody that would like to comment on this particular agenda item in person. If they could please line up over behind Joanne, that would be great.
So, thanks again, my name's Joanne McGary, and I tried to research where these surplus properties were in the city of Arcata. And if one of them is way out there past West End Road, is it called Bell Fowler? Is that what they're talking about? Okay, I did go out there several months ago when it was being discussed as a potential location for housing, houseless people. And I do know there is a company that works out by there, and are they aware of what's going on here? And it would be sort of nice if there was a little visual, David Loyah, if possible sometimes, to point out where these surplus properties are in connection to the whole big city picture. I mean, I, you know, maybe it was in the packet that the council got, but, anyway. Communication with all of us and with people who have businesses out there and such, it would be just kind of nice to know that people are aware and there's a transparency and a knowledge of what is happening so that those people even have the opportunity to come here and speak about it and what they think about it all, because they have a current business there. So, I don't, I don't get a lot of this whole land transfers and land sales and land zonings and things like that, and who owns what, and why, we can say some things and have to keep other things secret. But, and when it comes to this, it would be nice for the citizens to kind of know what the city's surplus lands look like and where they are and what the neighbors know about it and think. So, just think, you know, open communication and transparency, so that's all I was asking.
Thank you.
So, if it's possible, I would like to have an opportunity. Do you have more people online?
Okay. There's no online communication.
And also, I'd like to address it, so I do a move for adoption of Resolution Number 223-21, declaring city-owned properties to be surplus lands pursuant to Surplus Land Act. I just wanted... Pardon me?
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought maybe, I didn't say acts. I just want to mention is that in the 1970s, the city of Arcata noticed that there was a lack of industrial land within our county that was available. So, they decided to look at a piece of property, which is Alder Grove Industrial Park, and acquire, it's just called now Alder Grove Industrial Park, and acquire that land and make it available for manufacturing and industrial uses. And that is what has gone on over the years. But we have these two lots that have been sitting there since the 70s and have not been utilized. And my feeling is that we need to move those lots on for development, for some kind of job-related development. And that's what the industrial park is for, and it's not for housing, because housing is really an isolated area when you think about having eight stories of low-income housing. I'll just say that, you know, eight stories, ha-ha. But nevertheless, I just think it's about time the city looked at trying to deal with this excess property at Alder Grove Industrial Park. But the other thing, it brings up the thought that we do have Little Lakes and we have Happy Valley. And those are two others that we should, in this coming year, think about and be dealing with this process since it's such a lengthy process to go through. So, I vote yes.
And though, just so you know, those are included in this. That's, we're also talking about Little Lakes and Happy Valley.
Mm-hmm. But I mean, I think those are really important for us to move it through the process. But we're actually dealing, tonight, we're dealing with Alder Grove Industrial Park.
Oh, all of them, okay, sorry, sorry.
Yeah, and there's actually pictures of those land, the maps in Packet Page 73 and 74. So, they're in there. All right, we've got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right, so next we have, in new business, to approve a memorandum of understanding between Playhouse Arts and the city of Arcata for Comunidad Unida del Norte de Arcata, Arcata, CUNA, Valley West Community Engagement, and authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents. So could we get a staff report on that, please?
Great, well, good evening again, council members. We, our city staff are glad to bring to you the opportunity for consideration of a memorandum of understanding with CUNA for a second year funded through ARPA allocation that the council made when you initiated an MOU with CUNA through the Organization Cooperation Humboldt back in December of last year. And so this past nearly a year has seen a tremendous amount of community momentum, really building within Valley West, and CUNA staff and volunteers have really been an integral part in making that happen. So, in the, in this past year, CUNA's been building related... So in the, in this past year, CUNA's been building relationships within the community and neighborhoods. They have adopted Carlson Park, the front part of Carlson Park, have been leading community cleanups at Howland Park and Valley East and Valley West Boulevards, gaining more opportunities for community connections among, among neighbors. They led the city's first participatory budgeting process, and then worked with the city and other partners to implement outcomes that community members in Valley West voted as, you know, most important in their community, and also have really provided a space for city staff and community members to engage, you know, more with the Valley West community in North Arcata. So, you know, city staff have found that partnership has been successful and has really helped to meet the council's goals of, you know, more connections in, in Valley West, particularly around beautification and, yeah, faster and more connections. So what is before you today, though, is a recommendation to approve a second year MOU with Playhouse Arts being the fiscal sponsor for CUNA. As I said, we had a very successful first year, CUNA started as a project of Cooperation Humboldt, and with different staffing and leadership changes, Cooperation Humboldt leadership, CUNA staff and city staff have been in discussions and mutually agreed of a change in fiscal sponsorship could be helpful for going forward. Playhouse Arts serves as the, is a nonprofit in Arcata, serves as the local arts agency. They have partnered with CUNA on events this past year, so they have worked together in Valley West. And their mission of working to create a society that is inspired and empowered to work together for the common good in meaningful ways dovetails well with what the city and CUNA have really outlined as a scope of work for engagement in Valley West. And city staff recommend some slight updates to the scope of work, mainly having more focus on neighborhood and community leadership development, and especially for sustainability for the great work that CUNA has been doing. The council allocated three years of, of paid staff time to really initiate this work, and we've really seen that to sustain this type of collaboration, really bringing in and empowering more community leaders is a way to really continue that work. So there was more of a focus on that, as well as an outline for a second participatory budgeting process to happen in this next year. So those are the suggested updates to the MOU and fiscal sponsorship, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. And believe that CUNA staff and Playhouse Arts staff are tuned in remotely if you have questions for them as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from council?
I think this is a great idea, and I think it fits really well. So thank you.
Yeah, and just to say thank you to CUNA and, you know, Playhouse for all that they do, but especially CUNA with the work they've been doing in Valley West. I mean, it really shows, I'm really happy to, you know, be able to fund this through ARPA and continue to, to fund it for a couple more years and hopefully, you know, eventually keep that going in a, in a, you know, permanently funded way as well. And so seeing them work with Playhouse has been, you know, a pleasure, and definitely this, you know, combo is going to keep things going strongly. So I'm glad to see this coming before us to, to change that up for this upcoming year.
So I'll make a motion, approve the memorandum of understanding between Arcata Playhouse and the city of Arcata for the, I'll let you say it, CUNA, I'm gonna, I'm not going to be able to pronounce the other, Valley West Engagement, and authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents.
I'll second. Okay, do we have any members of the public that would like to comment on this particular item?
We just have one online under Playhouse Arts. Go ahead, Playhouse?
Hi, this is Jacqueline Dand, and I'm the Executive Artistic Director of Playhouse Arts, and I'm really so pleased to be engaging in this partnership with CUNA. I think some of the work that we do together will, will be awesome for, for Valley West as we focus more there too, and to be able to work with CUNA in a more robust manner and offer them some of our resources as well is really exciting. So thank you for embracing this partnership, and I look forward to conquering the world. No, I look forward to really working robustly with, with CUNA and making this a great partnership.
Thank you, Jackie.
Uh, no other online comments?
Okay, well, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes unanimously. All right, so we have, the next section is for oral and written communication. The city appreciates public input, and this time is provided for people to address the council or submit written communications on matters that are not on the agenda. Please know that pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on items that are not listed on the posted agenda. At the end of all oral and written communications, the council may respond to statements. Supported requests that require council action will be set by the council for a future agenda or referred to staff. Speakers addressing the council will be limited to three minutes. And also, for those of you that were wanting to get into early communications and could not, hopefully you're, um, here to speak again. So let's go ahead and take our in-person folks first.
Hello, can everyone hear me? Okay. Hello again to the Arcata City Council members. My name is Gerardo Hernandez. Earlier, I was on Zoom, speaking, holding accountable and voicing my displeasure of councilmembers Watson's erratic behavior. Councilmember Watson, you have continued to get into bitter clashes with your own colleagues and disrespecting and berating your own city staff members. More than over 50 local women leaders in Humboldt County have called for your resignation and time and time after again. I was in the last city council meeting, someone called for your resignation, saying you should have resigned a long time ago. You should have done that already, but instead, your narcissism, and I don't even know what's going inside your head, you think that you're still gonna win this election because you think that your misconduct will be excused. No, you, I've had, in my hometown, city council members who were corrupt and who decided to get into fraud, and they have at least resigned, from what I know, from what I've seen from your misconduct. It is ridiculous. It is saddening to see, especially when we have other people, like our youth, witnessing what's going on every day on the news, seeing of your behavior, and they're thinking, no, you're, you're not being held accountable. You, you should have been, you have been, but you continue to ignore their rules. In the last city council meeting, you were arguing with your own colleagues and like raising your voice over them. It's, it's ridiculous from what I've seen. And not only that, you, I'm pretty sure you're catfishing, I'm pretty, whoever is Delilah Goldstein, literally, when you go see her profile on Facebook, it, her image is in other numerous of, of other accounts that are from Virginia and everywhere else. And apparently, Delilah Goldstein owned ArcataTruce.com, but apparently on October, at the end of October, apparently she sold it to Brett Watson, and now Brett Watson's like, an exclusive interview with Delilah Goldstein's coming up. How about you try to talk to her, saying, hey, you're being catfished right now? Or if she's even a real, you know, Brett Watson, honestly, when I lose in your upcoming election, you will be held accountable no matter what. The city is already doing that. I just hope the Arcadian residents know what's best and not be tricked into your mindset of like, you will do what's best for Arcadians, when you haven't, when you've been disrespecting and have prolonging agenda items for far too long. Anyway, that's it, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to correct you, it's pronounced Archatins, not Arcadians. And I appreciate your comments, thank you.
Hi, hi again. It's Anissa Escudero, Executive Director of the Arcata Chamber of Commerce and Arcata Humboldt Welcome Center. That's a long name to say. I want it shorter than next year, but anyways, we have some exciting events happening this week at the chamber. Our first Thursday mixer is tomorrow night. It will be held at Coast Central Credit Union at 686 F Street here in Arcata. It is from 5:30 to 7:00, and it's free to attend, so it is open to everyone in the public. We also have a grand opening at Bella's Baskets and Humboldt Marketplace, and that is this Friday at 12 o'clock, the ribbon, oh, from 12 to 1:30, the ribbon cutting is going to be at 12, so councilmembers, you want to attend, please arrive 15 minutes early so I can coordinate. And I, that, the location to that is at 11, I cannot pronounce the street name, Erickson Circle, I believe, and then-
You could probably just say it's out of-
Okay, there you go, thank you.
And a lot of people will know that, where that is located.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Our second grand opening is going to be North Coast, they are have, or North Coast Op, I'm sorry, they're having their grand reopening on Saturday from 10 a.m. all the way to 4:00. And for the first 50 people, they're going to be giving out some great goodie bags. The grand opening is at 10:00, so if you plan to attend, please arrive at least 15 minutes early. We're also partnering up with Arcata Main Street to present some upcoming workshops about people experiencing homelessness and how to interact with them in the community. Some more details will be given at a later time. As I previously mentioned, the Welcome Center is open again Monday through Friday from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. We're still closed on the weekends, so any questions, don't hesitate to contact me. I have some business cards in the back. And visit our website, it's brand new and it's, it looks completely different, so thank you for having me.
And you've done a good job in rearranging the interiors, so I wanted to congratulate you on that.
Hi, council members, I'm back. My name's Glenn Caldwell, Western Avenue, Arcata. Been before you the last several meetings to ask for help with crime and vandalism related to the Alliance footpath, which is across the street from my house. Perhaps you've heard of the broken window theory in criminology. Broken window theory states that visible signs of crime, antisocial behavior, and civil disorder create an urban environment that encourages further crime and disorder, including serious crimes. Here's an update on vandalism in our neighborhood. Last Monday at 2:00 a.m., my neighbor across the street, a 21-year-old Cal Poly student whose front door is five feet from the Alliance footpath, sent me this text. This is 2:00 in the morning, we are out of town, away from home, and now worrying about our property being vandalized. Quote, "Hey Glenn, me and Keith were going to bed, and we heard the shaking of spray cans outside of our house. I turned on the porch light and told them to keep moving. I watched six people walk up the street on Western, up to the stop sign and turn left. I don't know what to do. This stuff keeps me up at night. I'm afraid of confronting them, that this will make them want to, God forbid, spray paint our cars or something worse, but I can't sit in our bedroom and allow it to happen. I just wanted to keep you up to date on the type of shenanigans going on, on the trail." The group of people then proceeded to spray paint my graffiti on my neighbor's new redwood gate at 2275 Western Avenue. It was tagged that night with purple spray paint. The street pavement was also spray painted. My neighbor Antonio and his 75-year-old father, Tony, on Grant Avenue, the direct line of travel east of the footpath, informed me that he has recorded years of late-night trespassing incidents on his property. People in their backyard, breaking car windows, their cars, coming onto their porch. He's willing to write a compilation video if anyone is interested. So that's what happened last Monday night at 2:00 a.m. that we know of. What else occurred that we don't know about? Which brings to mind a question. Why isn't a monthly crime report part of our city council meetings? Are property thefts increasing? Are they decreasing? Are car thefts in Arcata increasing? Are they decreasing? Do we know? Do we want to know? If we don't talk about crime in Arcata, if we put our heads in the sand, how can we possibly begin to deal with it? I'm requesting that my city council agendize a monthly crime report for the first meeting of each month. If we're not willing to include this on the monthly city council agenda, I'd like to know why it won't be done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Really appreciate you, Glenn, taking the time and having the courage to make that comment, and I 100% agree with you, you know, I think too often, you know, we, we try to pretend and hide the reality of our city. And, you know, we need to be strong enough to have those conversations and, and take real action. This is exactly what I worried about, you know, when you guys came last time. You know, I know a council member said she was going to work on it with staff, so it'd be great to get an update on that. Thanks.
Hi, my name's Joanne McGary, and I'm here for the fourth time at the podium tonight, and might be here again after the next item, but I wanted to say that I sent all of you an email today, and I did hear back from three of you, and I thank you for acknowledging that you at least received it. You know, you don't have to agree with everything I say, even though it's stellar stuff, but it, one, one of the things I was addressing was how the agenda is put together and what time is spent on, on certain matters. And I do know that a lot of times I'll come here before the regular meeting starts, and there's been a special meeting interviewing, maybe potential candidates for committees and this and that, and it's also videotaped. And I would like to suggest that 20 minutes was taken up in this regular meeting today at the beginning with ceremonial matters. I know people love ceremonial matters, some of the topics and organizations that are recipients of those proclamations are, you know, most worthy, and it's really good stuff. But as Glenn demonstrated, we have some serious issues that are as important as ceremonial issues and to talk, talk about at regular meetings. So perhaps we can start considering ceremonial matters like we consider interviews with committee members and having time before the regular meeting to do those things. And you can acknowledge it at the regular meeting, that prior to the meeting, we gave out a proclamation, and you can find it on the video and such, and on Access Humboldt even, and it was to these organizations for this purpose, for this week, for this day. And maybe do it that way so that people like Glenn don't have to race back to make a comment, because he wasn't in the first four to make the comment, and we had 20 minutes already take place in the meeting. And so I just really want you to consider maybe reevaluating what the public is learning about during a regular meeting, and some of the really important, serious stuff that needs to be, have time spent on, you know. Greg Daggett talked about how the Coastal Commission, or the grand juries, or Civil Grand Juries' report on sea level rise got short shrift, and a lot of time was spent on a dispensary permit approval. So where are our priorities in this town? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Fred Wise. First, I want to say I mean no disrespect for staff, and I, I will repeat this to David, but it should not be up to me to find false statements in staff reports. In my view, there are alternatives to this project. I'm talking about the Westwood Gardens apartments. The commission did not have to approve it in its current form. I don't know the degree of familiarity you have with this project. The plans show it, but a model will be much more useful. I could make a model in a few hours, if that would help any of council members, please ask. The problem is that they're packed too closely together. It's a series of buildings, each one is between 12 and 20 feet from the adjoining building because of our low sun angle. Each one shades the next building. The people, it's, they're all two-story buildings, the people who live in the lower story get no sunlight. They'd be prone to mold, of course. It's just a quality of life issue in that sense. There is a, three garden spaces there. One, the garden space gets less than three and a half hours of sunlight for six months of the year. There's a recreational space that gets zero sunlight for four months of the year. At the highest peak of the year, when our days are 15 hours long, it gets less than half of that in daylight. It's just a terrible project, you know my opinion on it, but I also think that the level of- But I also think that the level of false statements in the staff report are not, not right, to put it mildly. The, I mentioned earlier that it says that it's unrestricted affordable housing. Commissioner Figueroa said, "I know we need to do what we need to do to move forward with having affordable housing." Scott Davies said, "I'm going to invoke John Barstow in his absence to say this makes sense because it meets our needs for affordable housing." It's not affordable housing. I wish it were. I think something like Soral Place could be built on the site. Developer doesn't want to do that. It would save at least half of the open space of the site. I will present more in my website and I'll let you know when it's, the article's there. I wish there's something you can do. I don't know what it is, but I really wish you, because it's, when something is built on the site, it's done, you know.
So Fred.
Yes.
Are you going to appeal the decision from the Planning Commission to the council?
I am not. I believe that there are citizens who are. The cost of that is $1,874, I think. Just, I think a whole lot of money for citizens to do. I don't know the process. I don't know whether one of you can bring this up as an appeal. I just think it could be better. And as we all know, once something gets built on it, the site is not available to be built on ever again. I'd rather see a good site built, you know, even though we need housing right away. I'm not arguing with that one little bit. It would be much preferable to wait six months and get a good project there, if, if, if that's possible.
We need to talk to the developer, then?
I have not. But he, he seems very stuck on this in terms of his, his, what he said at this, at the Planning Commission meeting.
Okay, thank you, Fred.
Thank you.
And I, just to throw in, I believe that the council does have the authority to waive the appeal fee.
Hello to council and to staff. I just realized I should probably, we just came over from the traffic safety seminar that was going on and figured you'd come by and at least put a pitch in for the L Street Linear Park. It is, just thinking about open spaces, it does represent an opportunity to keep some in an area that could very easily be a lot of it dedicated to housing and represents a, definitely a guaranteed park. So I just wanted to keep reiterating that. And I've probably stated to you before, but we do have a website with more and more information growing on it since the Great Redwood Trails website is up now. And there's some links to that as far as interactive maps go and existing condition maps and also some maps to the Ukiah's Linear Park, which is also part of the Great Redwood Trail. And just once again to pitch the potential for this one, oh, it's really popping, to also be a part of that since it is the primary route for the California Coastal Trail and for the Great Redwood Trail. And the website, if anybody's interested, is arcadalinearpark.org. And there's also a petition on there in case anybody else watching wants to sign that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name's Dana Quillman. I've been a resident of Arcata for 35 years. I've owned my house for 35 years in Arcata and I'm also running for Arcata City Council. I wanted to take three minutes of fame here to the elections next week. I want to let people here in Arcata know that I love this city. I don't like what it's becoming. I don't like the housing hog on the hill, the university. I don't like their, their plans for expansion. I don't like the Gateway Project for all kinds of reasons that have been mentioned before. A few people have said things like, "Oh, you people that have already got yours," you know, you know, you're like, like we're selfish or something. And I want to address that. Those of us that have owned our houses here for a long time and have lived here, we've been taking really good care of this community because we love it. And we've heard all along, "Oh, where are our kids going to live?" you know? And nobody, except me, except not very many people ever say, "You know, the reason why there's always been a housing problem for the whole time I've lived here is because of the university. It drives all of the problems of housing here. And now they want to increase their enrollment a huge amount and it's going to exacerbate everything. Parking, crowdedness all over, too many people in a small space, as I've stated before. This is the problem. As a, as a community, we need to rise up together as a population of people that love this city and say, "No, no, you need to find some housing in Eureka, in McKinleyville, other places." And the other thing is, you know, they've driven up the prices here. They, you know, the rents are too high, the cost of, to buy a house is too high. The only people that can live here right now or move here right now are low-income people that housing's been built for. And also wealthy people that can afford to pay $500,000 for a Pacific Manor house. Okay? So the reason it's like this is because of the university. Okay? So, and it's not going to change. You think you can't buy a house now? You think it's going to get better? You're going to be happy in a condominium over there in an eight-story building? With no parking, you can't own a car? Does that sound fun for anyone? The people that are coming here now and want housing and go, "Oh, you know, you people, you already have it." You're like, you know, "You're going to hate this town too. You're going to hate this town too when there's 4,000 more people in eight-story buildings. You'll be sorry that you supported all that." So that's all I have to say. I love Arcata and I don't like what's happening. And we need to stand up to the university and stop just bending over and letting them do whatever they want to our town. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, let's go to our online public comment.
All right, our first online public comment is phone-in ending in 1199. Go ahead, phone-in ending in 1199. Can you unmute? Yep, you're unmuted.
Yeah, I'm just calling in tonight to show my support for Brett Watson. I've known him for quite a while now. Seems like a stand-up guy. He does put our community first. I think it's ridiculous the way you guys have bullied him over the last year. He's admitted his faults and just like blood in the water with a shark. Everybody, everything comes out. I still don't understand why he doesn't get the same treatment as Nancy Pelosi did when her husband got a DUI with drugs in the car no less than 60 days ago. It's all brushed under the rug and that's in the highest government of this land, so. Other than that, you guys wasted a bunch of money in this investigation and ongoing bullying of Brett. And I think that the money and time could be better spent fixing our community. The crime is outrageous. The college is forcing all these people out. There's no, no housing. And that's my piece, so. Hope you guys start listening.
Thank you.
All right, our next speaker is call-in user ending in 1041. Go ahead, call-in user 1041.
Can you, can you guys hear me?
We can.
Oh, awesome. Hey, guys, my name is Donnie. You know, I wasn't going to comment, but I've just been listening and wow, like, I had to comment after hearing the same person get to comment twice without objection. I guess that's a thing now. Regarding the use of a consent calendar, so I'm going to read this definition. "The concept of a consent calendar is to expedite meetings and reserve time for matters that need to be discussed. Items on the consent calendar are generally non-controversial items that do not require much, if any, discussion." So I'd agree with Councilmember Brett. It does seem to be used for the purpose of squelching free speech if, like, the topic needs to be discussed. And this guy who has now commented twice, like, wow. Look, I've, I've looked into this whole sexual harassment allegation. Number one, they're allegations. It hasn't gone to court yet. He hasn't been found guilty. This is America. He has the right to a speedy trial and to be viewed as innocent until proven guilty. Secondly, so Brett got pulled over for drunk driving. He didn't get in an accident. He didn't hurt anybody. He went into a rehab program afterward and has been sober for over a year now. This is something the community should be celebrating, not condemning. Third, the email he sent, I believe he saved the council on an email from a constituent. Is that, is that really cause for arrest? And I'm just curious, are, are we going to arrest him tonight because of his presence here during this meeting? Like, what's the difference? And then fourthly, does anyone else think this Gregory guy is a little creepy? Like, who has the time like this? Like, am I supposed to just assume he's like the torchbearer of all facts and truth? Please. His kind of rhetoric doesn't bring about the healing that is needed in Arcata and Humboldt. The hate and vitriol is super divisive. It only serves to hurt and further divide our currently divided community. Finally, the council wasted $15,000 of taxpayer money on a poorly done investigation into Brett and never gave Brett the opportunity to be interviewed. Not only did the city choose an overpriced, unlicensed investigator, they obviously chose a person who shared their bias as it is so very, very clearly obvious, having now read their entire report, excuse me. Meanwhile, the investigation Brett Watson paid for presumably out of pocket reads like scientific method applied by a clear professional with a long history of investigative work. The contrast is literally like night and day. So please consider throwing your love behind Brett Watson, who deserves all the love he can get. And I hope this person does some soul searching to heal the pain in his life because I, I could hear it in his voice. I just, I really, I'll pray for him tonight. Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is call-in user one. Go ahead, call-in user one.
Hello, can you hear me, council?
We can.
Hi, I just want to say that, hi, Zach, Arcata. I just want to say that as an Arcata resident for several, for going on a decade now, Brett Watson is a complete embarrassment to everything that I've come to know and love about Arcata. He's terrible. He hasn't really answered for any of his many transgressions. He's made his complete banality and mediocrity everybody's fault. This cadre of people crawling up, reading scripts of basically all of Brett Watson's talking points is frankly, pathetically hilarious. Brett Watson spends his time playing games on Twitch and fear mongering. He has no real plans for Arcata. He is a blight, really. I really hope in the next week or so Brett Watson has nothing to do with the city council. He, the investigation into him was incredibly thorough, lasted over a year. And his quote-unquote "counter-investigation" was done by a complete clown show of a investigative company that any cursory Google search will, you know, show you. So, you know, Brett Watson, get the help you need. Stop making your idiocy everybody's problem. And stop with this, like, weird catfishing situation. Just, you need help, dude. This isn't normal. You spend your time fear mongering. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Do you have a Twitch channel? It's automatic underscore 707, if anyone wants to check it out. Thanks.
Our next speaker is Raylena. Go ahead, Raylena.
Hi, um, thank you. I, I'm here to make comment on the Westwood Garden Apartments that was recently planned by, approved by the Planning Commission. And I, I would like to request that the council waive the appeal fee of $2,054 to make an appeal, if that's, if that's possible. There are a lot of things that are in the proposed development that are incongruent with Arcata's values. And looking at where we are in the grand scheme of things with the general plan being updated, you know, in the midst of passing what could be a very exciting form-based code approach with the Gateway Area Plan, as well as Title 24 coming to effect in January 2023, that updates a lot of standards for energy usage for our buildings. This development that was just approved, I think really through, you know, a, a, through necessity but unnecessarily so. Yes, you know, we do need housing, but the way that this plan is proposed does not create anything more than like subpar housing. It would be, it's akin to military barracks. You know, there's nothing wrong with that, but at the end of the day, you know, we want to be encouraging healthcare workers to move here, families to move here, and not just providing 416 square foot boxes for what is proposed for seniors and students. So I will cede the rest of my time in hopes that we can engage in a bit of a dialogue around appeal fees, but that is my comment. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, our next speaker is a call-in speaker. Last four digits, 8801. Call-in 8801, go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Hi, I was just calling in to give my support to Brett Watson. I've known Brett for a long time and he might not be a perfect person, but he's a good person and he really cares about the city of Arcata. I feel like it's not really fair what everyone's put him through this last year. As far as I can tell, it seems like a lot of money has been spent to go against Brett when really what we should be doing is taking that taxpayer money and putting it toward stuff that is better for the city. There's a lot of people here that could use the help. We could be focusing that time and money spent on better things that's going to better our community instead of tear it apart and rip it down. I know Brett works really hard for Arcata and I just wish that we could put our efforts toward caring for Arcata as much as he does. And I just wanted to call in and give my support to him.
Thank you.
All right, our next speaker is Anthony. Go ahead, Anthony.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for doing all you do and being here tonight. I was really pleased when a handful of commenters ago, someone mentioned that Arcata would, could, should consider telling the university to be okay with housing developed elsewhere, McKinleyville. And I know there's a project that was being promote, proposed in Bayside area and around the Bayside cutoff. And I think it's a really great point, especially when you consider the failed businesses in the mall and the Kmart and those locations that are kind of just there and empty. I think there's a U-Haul business in the, the old Kmart, but like, it seems like it would be smart to use these old pre-existing locations and buildings that are just big and empty for housing as opposed to ruining the atmosphere of Arcata by trying to cram so many people into Arcata. It's kind of like one of those situations where the simplest solution is the, the right one. And I think that it, it just would be really great to see Arcata continue to be a place that supports local business and economy and thinks locally, acts, thinks globally, acts locally and just kind of, a lot of the stuff that's happening with these developments and people kind of being concerned with the way that, that the conversation and the planning's going compared to what we know would be good for us. And even just the politics, people arguing with each other and smearing each other, it just seems like it's not productive. I would love to see Arcata teach students that come here about local life and to sustainability and doing things right. So like the Linear Park. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, our next speaker is Ryan. Go ahead, Ryan.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Yes, I just wanted to call up and also show my support for Brett Watson. I know I've heard from quite a few different speakers today, but I'm, myself personally, and it kind of raises something up when, when I see people getting railroaded, like it appears that Brett has. And we, we don't really need, you know, perfect people these days. We just need, you know, people with courage to go against the grain and occasionally vote no on things. And that, that's one thing, and I see, you know, a lot, you know, not only in Arcata but around the rest of the county. And it, everybody just votes to keep the money rolling in and we can't always do that. That's why I would urge other people to support Brett Watson as well in the upcoming election. Thank you.
So, you know, it's really interesting for, you know, I served on the council for a total of 16 years. I've never seen the city council meetings be handled as a political platform. I've never seen people call in or come and stand up and say, "I want you to support this candidate or that candidate." It's really actually quite appalling to me to see this actually happening. And I know I, not calling in or anything with any number or whatever, but it's appalling. I've just never seen it. And I've never, in the times I've run for city council, which have been excluding the last time, that would be, it would be eight times, none of the candidates ever did this or came and spoke at the diocese or any, or called, well, couldn't call in, but they never did this kind of campaigning. I'm really appalled.
I appreciate that, Alex, and it kind of reminds me of the May seventeenth meeting that was orchestrated, uh, where it seemed like, you know, a political platform may have expressed and there were numerous people there expressing their opinions as well as the council. So, you know, I agree, it's something we should, uh, you know, maybe we can look at creating some protocols around that. Thanks.
All right, our next online speaker is Adam. Go ahead, Adam.
Hello, I just wanted to touch base again on the Westwood Apartments. Um, if there is somebody on council that could sponsor an appeal or potentially waive the appeal fee, uh, I would like that to just be consideration. It is pretty onerous for the members of this community to come up with the amount of money required to actually pay for the appeal. And I do believe that the point is to help the community do better and some people are more able to do that than others. Um, thank you very much.
Yeah, Adam, if the council's not willing to do it, I'll definitely help you, uh, raise the money to make your appeal.
My understanding is that the council has to agree it as a whole if they wanted to have this appeal happen. So, or it would have to be the majority of the council.
Okay, our next online comment is Jane. Go ahead, Jane.
That's nice. Good evening. What, Adam's still on, looks like. Oh, hi. Um, good evening. I attended both of the hearings of the Planning Commission regarding the Westwood properties. And, um, I was frankly appalled at what was presented and the, um, design that really is very wasteful. Um, the developer has no interest in, in producing anything over two-story. Um, but the result is that he uses practically every square inch of the property and eliminates all the community property. In the first hearing, in order to try to get it passed, he had agreed that he would, uh, offer, he offered to eliminate five of the units. And, um, that offer, they asked him to go back and redesign. So he came back with a new design and that design is, um, better in terms of the number of trees, but it's not better overall. And I think it really, I would very much support that the city council review the decision that was made. It looked like the Planning Commission was torn between fear of loss of the concessions they'd gotten with the developer if they asked for more. And the threat that they understood they were under if he used the state, uh, option to, um, instead of this, they, they might lose the concessions that he'd already made. So they felt they were between a rock and a hard place and so they went ahead and passed it. I think this whole project should be reviewed by city council because I don't think it's in keeping with what we're trying to create for the city of Arcata. So I would recommend as a council that you waive the fee so that you can actually look at this project in depth and decide whether we can't do better and we can't ask the developer to do better. Um, he wants to make as much money as he can. It's easy to build two-story housing. Uh, he's trying to put as many, uh, individual small units on it as possible. If you look at the existing units, they're one, two, and three bedroom apartments, which are tremendously livable, and he's turning it into an entirely different project. Now, he bought the property. He's trying to make a lot of money, but, um, I don't, and he says he's trying to keep it affordable, but if he goes over two-story, it's not going to be as affordable. Well, he could opt to, uh, put actual affordable units in it. I agree with the problem with the handicapped.
Jane, that's actually your three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you very much, but I hope you do that, do look at it.
All right, our next speaker, call in user two. Go ahead, call in user. Can you unmute call in user two? All right, we'll try call in user three. Go ahead, call in user three. Call in user, can you unmute?
Hello?
Yep, there you go.
Okay, hi, Zach from Arcata again. Just after call in and echo what, uh, council person, uh, Simon says.
But you, you already spoke during this session, I believe. It's just one per person.
Okay.
Sorry. We just have call in user two. That's the last one. If he can, or she can unmute, or they. Call in user two. Oh, you're unmuted. Go ahead.
Hello, uh, can you hear me okay?
We can.
Okay, great. Uh, my name's Lori Waldorf. I'm a local homeowner in the Sunset neighborhood. I was in person in the city council. I want to do a public, uh, two minutes. And now I'm doing it from home because we were cut off. Uh, we would ask that respectfully that you postpone any November planned work on the trail. I'm speaking specifically to the Alliance Sunset Trail. This is throwing good money after bad idea. Put that money in defenses instead. This is a public safety, safety and liability issue impacting all of Sunset neighborhood and affected Alliance neighborhoods. After dark, this dangerous trail becomes a criminal highway. There is a vast increase, two hundred percent increase in car and truck thefts in Arcata, according to our chief of police. Tire slashing, trespass into yards, smashed vehicle windows, graffiti. Plain and simple, this is a liability issue for the whole city. As more infill incurs current and future, the, uh, flow of foot traffic and, and bikes on Alliance, Western need to take five more minutes and go to the vastly improved walkway on Foster. As homeowners and citizens of Arcata, we expect our leaders to have, to show their leadership and to show their vision. And absolutely that includes safety to our renters, Cal Poly students, and homeowners here in Arcata. A lasting solution to this, uh, trail is to remove the unsafe infrastructure and place unclimbable fences top and bottom, saving five minutes. A lawsuit ready to happen. A compromise would be unclimbable fence, top and bottom of the trail with locked gates at Sunset, like our nearby city skate park. We believe the current situation would not be tolerated for a private owner. Much more glaring liability for our dear city of Arcata. We came back here to live out our retirement years after thirty years of working elsewhere so we could enjoy the small-town ambiance of Arcata and the safety of Arcata. What was maybe a decent idea twenty years ago does not warrant any merit today. Thank you very much and please, please give us some, um, something that will solve this unsolvable situation. It's not okay. Look at, look up Google.
That is your three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, there's no more online public comment. Okay, uh, I know we're close to the end, but we do have a report and we'll probably have some questions. So we're gonna take a quick five-minute break and then we'll finish up our meeting. Okay, uh, welcome back to our council meeting and we are moving on to the last portion, which is council and staff reports. So we have, um, Emily Von Vee, the Director of Environmental Services and Community Services on implementation of the Single Use Disposable Foodware Regulation Ordinance.
Thank you. Good evening, council members. Um, so before I jump into the recent update on our Single Use Disposable Foodware Ordinance, I thought it might be helpful to provide a little bit of context and background into the history of how this ordinance came to be and where we are now. Um, as it's coincided with, um, the COVID pandemic, coincidentally, so it's, it's been an interesting few years. Um, the ordinance was adopted initially in February of twenty twenty, um, with an effectiveness date of March twenty twenty, as certainly we all remember that coincided with the shelter in place. Um, the ordinance as written was scheduled to be effective in March of twenty twenty with enforcement scheduled for January of twenty twenty-one. So that was the original, um, timeline for the ordinance. In November of twenty twenty, excuse me, council delayed the enforcement until July of twenty twenty-one. And so while the ordinance has been in effect since March of twenty twenty, the enforcement was delayed six months until July of twenty twenty-one. In June of twenty twenty-one, um, this ordinance came back to the council through the COVID. All of this has been through the COVID Public Health Emergency Declaration, just as a side note. Um, in June of twenty twenty-one, the mandatory fee and discount portion of this ordinance, um, was further delayed until, um, January twenty twenty-two. And then that piece got delayed again until December of twenty twenty-two. So to take another step back and speak a little bit more about the functions of the ordinance, um, this ordinance effectively prohibits single-use disposable foodware that is, um, predominantly plastic, but all single-use disposable foodware unless it is fiber-based compostable. There are some exemptions. Um, it also requires accessory foodware is available upon request and it, um, requires that dine-in be on reusable foodware and it requires a mandatory fee if you, if mandatory fee of twenty-five cents per order for takeout orders with disposable foodware or a discount if customers bring their own. And I apologize, I should have just laid that out at the outset. So all of that is to say that the fee and discount portion has been incrementally delayed over the past couple of years. The reason being, certainly the impacts that we've seen on food service establishments through the course of the pandemic, coupled with the, um, public health perception from both businesses and customers surrounding concerns of bringing reusables. Um, so as we have been approaching our enforcement date of this fee and discount provision piece of the ordinance scheduled towards the end of December, uh, we've been ramping up our outreach in the past, I would say, three, three or four months. Um, we have done continuous outreach throughout the entire course of the ordinance, especially as these different portions have come into, become enforceable. Um, but most, most recently really our outreach is focusing around this, this message that the fee and discount piece is coming into effect and here's how customers can safely bring their reusable foodware. Here's what is required of businesses. Um, we have outreach to the general public. We've outreach to the business community. We've also worked with Zero Waste Humboldt, um, and a couple other nonprofits over the last couple of years um, to help convey the, the intent around the ordinance and we're hoping to partner with Zero Waste Humboldt um, on a grant that we had previously written a letter of support for to further have them assist businesses coming into compliance. Um, and we've also been partnering with environmental health to ensure that the ordinance has continued to be consistent with, um, environmental health requirements as well as really understand what is required of businesses for customers bringing their, um, own reusables. Um, for example, businesses who are receiving customers' single-use, sorry, reusable foodware are required to have sanitization protocols in place that environmental health reviews and approves. And so part of our outreach included sending a letter to all businesses that also included a sample protocol that we had vetted with environmental health as an example of here is how a business could implement, um, accepting customers' reusables in a way that environmental health would approve. You know, knowing that each protocol is specific to each individual business operation, but, you know, here's a template that can, that can be helpful. Um, the co-op, um, we've also worked quite extensively with, um, the Sustainability Officer of the co-op. They've been a really great partner in being able to. able to provide a food service establishment lens for some of our outreach materials. And so they had reviewed one of our letters and a couple of our flyers, I believe, but really one of the calls that the co-op had made over the last year or two was for the city to do more customer outreach, so that doesn't all fall on the burden of the businesses. So part of that has been us city staff developing templates for outreach flyers that businesses can post explaining the ordinance. It has been targeted outreach from the city platform, be it social media, be it newspaper ads, or tabling at the North Country Fair. We had some staff do to really just engage that broader community so that there's buy-in from both the business side as well as the public side. I'm trying to think of what other outreach I am leaving out. So newspaper ads, I covered that, social media, letters to businesses we've done in the last couple of months. We've created a press release with our medias list, which I think was picked up by the Mad River Union, at least recently. We're working on developing bus ads. We have a draft article for the ECO News that will run in an upcoming issue, and we're working on creating another flyer that we can post around town and at a number of Cal Poly Humboldt bulletin boards to help bring the student community into awareness of the ordinance. We're also hoping to reach out to Main Street and the Chamber to further share this information. And they were some stakeholders that I actually had previously spoken at some of their events way back in 2019, as we were developing the ordinance and answering questions. One last thing I will share is when I, when I mention enforcement, there might be a question of what is enforcement going to look like? As with, I would say, all of our solid waste enforcement cases, except for maybe, you know, one or two extenuating circumstances, we really operate on a complaint-driven basis of enforcement. And so we won't be going business-to-business checking their POS systems to make sure they have the fee and discount provisions in place. Really, we're, we're moving forward on a complaint-driven basis, expecting that businesses who aren't compliant, we would be notified about, and then we would work with them to bring them into compliance through an education and awareness method, which is very similar, like I said, to how we address our other typical solid waste complaints. So with that being said, I would be happy, I know that was a lot of information, and I probably moved through it pretty quickly, but I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
No, that was great, Emily. Thank you so much. So all of this information can be found on the city website that you just talked about?
Thank you. Yes, we do have a page on our city website. It is under Environmental Services. Gosh, you'll quiz me on the exact file path, but Environmental Services Sustainability Programs, there's a zero-waste page, and then there's a page specific to this ordinance. And it does, it includes all the general provisions of the ordinance for both businesses and residents. It also includes an Acceptable Materials Excel spreadsheet. So if a business wanted to know what compostable materials would be compliant with this ordinance, there's a whole huge variety of options to choose from. It's certainly not a comprehensive list, but that resource is out there. And I will say anecdotally, as a resident who eats out in Arcata probably more often than I should since 2020, I certainly, you know, just personally noticed that I would say all businesses really are in compliance with the, the fiber-based compostable provisions of the ordinance. So that's a real common practice we've been seeing in the last couple of years.
Okay. Thank you so much. That's wonderful. I would just wonder, I know that there's an extra cost to, for the restaurants to purchase these compostable materials. I'm wondering what it would look like if, would it possibly be more cost-effective if a lot of these restaurants like got together and did like one big bulk order of stuff to kind of lower the costs, and everybody could share that, and maybe someone volunteer a space to store some of that extra items, if that would be like a great thing to throw out there?
And that is actually a great plug. The grant that I briefly mentioned that Zero Waste Humboldt had was, has, was actually a bulk ordering grant, I believe, for this type of perfect purpose. So Zero Waste Humboldt would be a really good resource for businesses to reach out to initially and see how, how it's worked for them, and whether there might still be some opportunities to capitalize on under that grant program.
Okay, I think those are my questions. Thank you so much.
So I just experienced this recently because I've had a Chinese student living with me until there was dorm space for her. And when you become a new student there, they give you a coin, and that coin you take over the, for the first time you get your, I brought them last time, those green containers, and that coin will allow you to get your food, whatever it is, in that green container. And then after that, every time you take that green container back, you get a fresh one with fresh food in it. And so they have really worked on how they're putting that together. The, yes, we, the one you, she has in her front of her hand, that's what they have at the university, and that's what they're using. And so I think it's a quite, I don't know about taking it to a restaurant, but it's definitely the system that they're using at the university. And I think it's, it works really well. And you can use this the whole year there, as, as long as you keep getting your coin back. So I think that's a, there are students that are eating in the cafeterias, et cetera, on campus. I was impressed with that. And, and also watching, usually I try to eat my whole meal, whatever eaten, ordered, I try to eat it and not take it home, because I have friends that take it home, and then they leave town, and it's still in my refrigerator. So I figure, take, I just don't take, use takeout containers because of that reason. Just eat what you get. Maybe that's from my mother. Remember all the Armenian children that are starving and other, and that was when I grew up. So I'm sure everyone else has something of that nature. Okay, well, I, that's all I was going to say about that. Do you want us to, you just received us an update, so, okay, we don't have to.
I have one public comment online when you're ready.
Well, I'm happy to see we've gotten where we've gotten today, and thank you for all your hard work on doing that, and with the zero waste. And I thought it was great Ben Winkler happened to be here tonight picking up one of our proclamations and was able to speak to zero waste.
Do we have any other questions for Emily? All right. Thank you for that update, Emily. Much appreciated. Let's go ahead and do other, is there any other member of staff that has a report? Then we'll go to council reports.
Okay, well, all right. So I had my HTA meeting today, and one of the things they were talking about is that some of the students aren't aware about the Jack Pass. So I think they'll probably figure out how to get more education around that. Also, they've had a, an employee program for the City of Eureka and the county employees of Humboldt, where they've done a six-month trial on people riding the bus to going to work. And they said that it's been, the start of it has been really successful, and they hope to see it grow. I'm just mentioning it because Arcata is not part of that, and I don't know if we'd want to be or not, or how that would work, but I just thought I would bring that up because I'm supposed to. The other thing I brought up there, because I read about that, and that, I'm just, what I'm curious about is the Zoom from people calling us in. When it changes that we can only come on to Zoom twice a year under the new regulations of the governor, how does that affect Zoom with participants calling in? Does that make it anything, or is this a topic that should go on to another agenda?
We will be including additional information about the governor's new provisions that will go into place in the end of January. It's your next COVID update. But my understanding from the initial read is that members of the public will still be able to come in hybrid as they are currently.
Oh, really? Okay.
The actual requirement is that if there is a council member that is participating remotely, then the platform will have to be made available to the public for those meetings.
But if no one's, if no one is ill for their two times a year that they could call in on Zoom, then that means that public cannot use that form?
It doesn't have to be required.
Okay, I'm just curious about how that was going to work.
Yeah, it's not mandatory.
Thank you.
I mean, I definitely think we should keep it going, right? You know, giving people the opportunity to participate as much as we can, and we talk about that all the time. So, I mean, we definitely need to keep that going, in my opinion.
So the other thing, because I'm not through yet, but I only have one more item. And being that I'm now on the phone board, and they talk about locking the gates down at the Marsh, and we know they do it over at the Skateboard Park, et cetera, I'm really concerned about our, some of our trails and how we should look at that. And maybe Western is considered a trail or non-trail. You know, sometimes we get these walkways that go from one place to another, and it's just shortcuts. And you can see them coming down off of Seventh Street, cutting down into D Street, and there are short ones off of 11th that are going down to the apartments, the Tea Garden Apartments, and they become trails, but they aren't actually designated. And I'm wondering, maybe, maybe we should put Western, this Western Trail on our agenda, because I'm, is that something that was designated, or was it something that people started to use and it became a trail? You don't have to answer that, but I'm just, you know, I think about it, and I'm thinking if that's it, then, you know, we don't, if it's not a real trail, and we haven't put it together, and we don't have the right steps in it, and so forth and so on, then it shouldn't be something we should be dealing with, and it maybe should be something that goes away. So I'm hoping that maybe we can figure that one out. I'm going to go look at it on Friday, but I know several council members have been out there. It would be nice to know. Thank you.
Hi, I'd like to say something. I just want to recognize the action that the City Council of the City of Eureka took at their meeting last night and their beautiful show of solidarity with the 2S LGBTQAI+ community. I saw they were all dressed as the rainbow, and I just really appreciate that. And I just want you to know that City of Arcata, City Council stands with you as allies, and thank you for that.
Here, here to that, and on a similar vein, just something that I was proud to be kind of a small, small part of, but a part of nonetheless, Redwood Coast Energy Authority adopted their Racial Justice and Equity Plan, which I had the privilege of being on the subcommittee for part of my time on that board. But, you know, much more staff effort and other board member effort went into it as well. But really just taking a really close look at looking at all of their programs, their hiring practices, just the organization as a whole, and really how to address that through an equity lens, and, you know, to see an organization so prevalent in our community do something like that. Super important, and was a really wonderful experience to be a part of. So thank you to RCEA and the Board of Directors of RCEA for doing that.
I just also want to, you know, second and third all that, and yeah, I absolutely agree, and that's why, you know, I think a couple of months ago I requested an agenda item to, you know, prioritize marginalized communities and, you know, empower them to work with us as council members to find solutions. But maybe sometime in the near future, we'll actually make that a priority.
And for my report, just reporting in on Main Street, and we, Main Street had the trick-or-treat event on the plaza, and that was, a lot of people turned out, and there was a band, and lots of fun happening, and it was good to see all the, all the people on the plaza. And it was a great success for the executive director's kind of first big event. So we were, everyone was pleased with that, and it seemed to be a really good community event.
My understanding, there were between 700 and 1,000 people that ended up coming to that. I think the best window was sitting in Mizattis. I watched these two women sitting there, and they were watching everything, and I think, wow. So it was very successful.
Okay, so we do need to discuss one date for a future meeting, and that would be...
May I please give a report?
Sure.
Um, yeah, I just want to clarify, several people have, you know, commented to me that they, they, they are under the impression that I'm not allowed to attend meetings in person. And so I just wanted to clear that up, that that was something that the city requested, but was turned down. So I actually am allowed to attend in person, and I chose to stay on tonight because my, my rabbits, Abraham Lincoln and America, have babies, and I just wanted to, you know, be close with the babies and make sure they were taken care of. And, one second. A couple of community members have commented that they believe that there's been four deaths in the Valley West area. There's been four deaths in the Valley West area, three of them were homicides, and they felt like they weren't getting any answers about it.
Is that you making that noise? That, is there a high squeak? Is that coming from you?
I think we're okay. Go ahead, Brett.
Um, yeah, I don't know, I don't know what was going on.
There was a loud beeping on our end that sounded like a smoke alarm. Sorry, we're back.
There was a, commented to me that they felt that there were four deaths about this week. Three of them were homicides. They weren't able to get information about them from the police department. And so, yeah, I was just wondering if, you know, there's any truth to that, if we have any information about that. And then, yeah, just remind everybody to vote on November 8th. Make sure your ballots are postmarked by November 8th, and I hope everybody has a nice weekend. Thanks.
Right. So before we adjourn, we do need to set a date for a future meeting to swear in the new, newly elected council members. I believe that happens the Thursday after the second Wednesday in December.
So just looking at what time you would, yeah, so that would be December 15th. Yeah. Just what time you want to set that meeting for. And then we typically do the mayor, vice mayor rotation and review liaison assignments at that same meeting.
You're planning on that for December 15th?
I would prefer slightly later, just A, work, and B, I'm pretty sure RCEA has, they moved their board meeting up because of the holidays, so I'll have a meeting at 3:30, but like 5:30? That's, that's generous. Six, six might be good. Then I have an out.
What about first thing in the morning?
At work. Yeah, we both have work.
Maybe we can't figure out how to swear people in, because we can't figure out a time.
Does six o'clock work?
Yeah.
Okay, let's set, schedule it for, Bridgette, does 6:00 PM work for you?
I can't figure it out.
Okay, well, it, so we've got it set for Thursday, December 15th at 6:00 PM. Okay, and with that, that will take us to adjournment. Thank you. Have a lovely evening.